You better keep that beanie for awhile, that doesn't look promising. I was telling Mr. Persky, my friends in Texas, I've been shoveling their driveway over times it's snowing. I'm getting tired of driving. Call somebody else. I was gonna steal your spot, but you showed up.
Yeah, I was wherever you want me to be, I'll sit out in the hall if you want me to.
You're at the right hand of the man today, Mike, you gotta, you gotta step up to the plate.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure if I'm ready for that.
He's a real taskmaster over there.
Alright, we're at six o'clock, so we'll get the meeting called to order. First order of business, I always start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, shoot the flag.
Alright, we'll do a quick roll call of planning commission members, starting with District One.
Jason Weinerman here.
Alright, District Two?
Sean Blackburn here.
Alright, Sean, I have you for District Four now.
I'm sorry, we reshuffled, that's right.
Thank you.
I'll be back later.
Alright.
Dave Bencho, District Two.
Alright, good, and I'm Jason Crow, and I represent District Three, District Five?
Mike Perel.
Alright, and then we have at-large, Rich Blankish?
Rich Blankish right here.
And Tara. Alright, thank you, and then we also have our commission member, Persky here, that represents the discussions that happen and brings that back to the board. So with that, we will get to agenda item number one, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by WDR Properties of Painesville, Minnesota, according to Section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439 to rezone approximately 51.9 acres from the Transitional T-20 zoning district to the Commercial zoning district. The property is part of the northwest corridor lying north of Dolphin Drive in Section Eight of Painesville Township. And Jennifer, applicant, you can come on up, or applicants, and I'll come back to you in a second to do introductions, and we can get started with the, actually, we'll start with roll call. Quick roll call of those that visited the site, and we'll just go in order with Jason?
Nope.
Alright, David?
Yes.
Alright, I was also able to, Sean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes, last month.
Very good, and Tara?
No.
Okay, very good, and then we will go, Jennifer, if you're ready, to staff report.
Yes, alright, as you mentioned, this is a rezoning request to rezone approximately 51 acres to commercial. The property is currently Zoned T-20, and the landowners own the business to the south there. You can see a large white shed on the property, better known as Avon Plastics. And so they've purchased this property, this 51.9 acres, and are requesting to rezone it to expand their business. Their intention right now would be to construct a storage warehouse and a future production plant. If the rezoning is approved, the permitting would be through the township, because it's not in shoreland, so the township does handle the permitting. There, and you look at the area, you can see that the access would be from Dolphin Drive, and there are, when we go out about a half mile buffer, we see there's about six homes, one registered feedlot, two other commercial businesses, and then you can see there's a number of solar farms within the area as well. The property I mentioned is not in shoreland or any other overlay districts or areas of concern. Now, currently being T-20, this property could have two homes on it. If it's rezoned to commercial, then no homes would be allowed. On the future land use map, it is shown as being in the agricultural slash rural area on our future land use map. They did go to Painesville Township, and the township did recommend approval of the rezoning, and that's included in your packet. And if this, if a decision is made tonight by the planning commission, then it will go to the county board on April 4th, that's all I have.
Alright, very good, and then we can go to applicant introduction, so if you just state name, address for the record.
My name is Nick Damath, I'm, I'm the owner of WDR, I have a partner also. I live at 17572 Flint Court, Cold Spring.
Thanks.
I'm also an owner of Avon Plastics. There is a correction to your statement, on the white building, it's not owned by Avon, it's owned by WDR.
Alright, very good.
Ryan Guggenberger, I'm actually the CFO for Avon Plastics, 22542 180th Street in Richmond.
Alright, very good, is there anything either you want to add to Jennifer's report?
Not additional to it, I can explain the reasons why we want to do it.
Okay, go ahead if you want.
The reason for the purchase of this property is that our current property in the city of Painesville, we're pretty much landlocked. We exceeded the growth, our company has been growing, and at a huge rate, and we have a lack of storage. Right now, we are currently putting our finished goods in 30 rented trailers. If you saw on the one site, the landfill or the mining area for that boss owns, we're storing the trailers out there. We currently will have to move them out this spring, but we are desperately in need in a warehouse. We're looking at building a 24,000 square foot warehouse. With the plan, either five to 10 years from now, we would like to move the whole facility out to that place. On that, that is our end game, is that we could get everything all on one site. With this warehouse, we hired an engineering company out of Alexandria called Woodset. We do have to put in our own sprinkler system, there will be a thousand gallon water tank there that's to suppress for fire. Other than that, the access to that property will be right along the white building that's there on the bottom, that wedge shape will be the way we drive in. The warehouse, there's a future, a third warehouse that would be built, probably maybe two or three years later. That would be, the current warehouse, I don't know if you have any prints of what we're actually doing. You don't?
So it'd be just, just to the north of the white building, maybe 300 yards?
Yeah, there's like the midpoint of that left west property line. There is, the plan for the use after, even if it's rezoned commercial, we are still going to continue to farm that property. We made an agreement with the current, the past landlord, that he can continue to rent the property. We did allow a, there's a 30-foot easement on the west line for agriculture equipment to get in and out. We also made an additional agreement with him that due to the the large capacity of harvesting crops and that, that 30 feet wasn't really adequate, so I made a verbal agreement with him that we would give him an additional 30 feet on there, so. Other than that, that's, I can answer any other questions.
Yeah, very good, any other questions by members for the applicants?
Mr. Chair, just a question, so if we do approve this with a recommendation for the board for approval, it's, you're looking at commercial development, you're gonna lose any, the two of the residential dwellings. Any thought on interest in keeping those?
Not, not at this point, there's no need for, with the mining going on, and there, this property was originally, there's two parcels to it. We did do as the, somehow, there was a, what would you describe?
So the, the northern 80 acres and the parcel that we purchased were on the same deed, so we had to do like a split.
So the plan is, you see the mining going on to the east there, that individual is looking to continue mining that whole north end of that property for the gravel, and we would continue, there is, he did sign away the deed or the access to continue mining on our property. We did, we did not want that to happen, but for adding homes in the country in that area, no. I did get, talked to the neighboring properties, if you look where the white warehouse is, there's three or four residents that lived on there, I had conversations with all of them. They were all super excited about the warehouse and the possibility of manufacturing versus seeing a solar farm put in their backyard on that, so.
Thank you.
Very good, any other questions for the applicants? Alright, so with that, we'll move to the public hearing. Is anyone here from the public on this item? If so, you can come on up and seeing, no rush for the front.
I move to close the public hearing.
Alright, motion made by Sean, seconded by Mike. All those in favor to close the public hearing, say aye. Aye, all those oppose?
Do we, when do we provide the comment? Jennifer, you provided us this email?
Oh, that one was for?
That's for later.
Okay, so nothing for this?
I think that was for Hidden Cove.
Yep.
Yes, thank you though.
So alright, any additional discussion on this item? Anyone wants to add for, as a member perspective? Otherwise, we'll move to findings of fact. Now, I have two, I have this copy of finding of fact, just from the staff. The questions are a little different than what we have in our packet. Do you know which one I should roll with?
Mr. Chair, if you want to read off the screen, otherwise that would be fine as well.
Okay, and actually, I'm just looking now, yeah, they're, they're pretty comparable, we're good. Okay, so number one then, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Weinerman, if we approve this recommendation to move to commercial, it will be consistent with the modified zoning district.
Alright, thank you, Jason. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county list the applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, it does conform. Future land use map, and agricultural rural areas, and our goals and policies, we look at our business goals and rural business practices. Number three, to encourage rural businesses seeking expansion in agricultural areas to locate near major transportation corridors, townsite mixed-use areas, or transitional areas.
Very good, thank you, Sean. Number three is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or why not? I think it's consistent in the matter, it's basically going directly behind the current operations, and right now, there's, there's kind of mixed use in that area anyway. So to me, this does not change that area dramatically, anyone see differently?
I see, is that right on the border of the city of Painesville?
No.
To the, to the south of that, does the city, does the city just come out just to the south?
No, I think that's all on the other side of the highway, I believe.
Yeah. On the other side of the highway, and so you've got regular, you've got your own water and septic, correct?
We'd be digging a well and septic, yep.
And, and, and I mean, I'm fine with that, I'm just thinking long-range plans with the city is might look into your plan.
Yep.
I think it's a great plan, I think the activity by going there, and this just makes it more beautiful.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Joe. Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I'd have to say that, he's been running the operation without any complaints or issues or troubles with anybody so far, so an expansion of the same business just would seem to indicate that he would continue to do so.
Yeah, and I'd add that there's input from neighbors and people that live in the area, which is always good to do ahead of time, so. And then five, are any other issues pertinent to this matter? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick ones. The applicant indicated they, they're gonna work with the current producer to keep the land in farming. I commend you for recognizing that farming equipment has grown in size, so giving him the 60-foot breadth is gonna be helpful down the future, so recognition of that.
And also that the township voted unanimously for this project.
Townships for it, you know, and I think the last thing I'd add too, it is that transition area is kind of that weird zoning for a while that the county have, but it's really right on the edge of the city, it isn't a spot where making a shift in zoning makes sense.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you must truck most of your product out, so it's relatively close to two major highways, which is a nice location.
Alright, unless there's anything else, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Alright.
I'll second.
Alright, very good, so, motion made by Rich, seconded by Dave to recommend approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those oppose? Alright, so motion approval, go on to the county commissioners, and when's their next meeting? April 4th, so, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright, so that'll take us to agenda item number two, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by Anderson Trucking Services of St. Cloud, according to Section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439 to rezone approximately 10.5 acres from the A-40 zoning district to the commercial zoning district. The property is part of the northeast corridor lying east of Interstate 94 in Section 19 of Linden Township. Real quick roll call of members who visited the site, we'll start with you, Jason?
No.
Alright, Dave?
Yes.
Alright, I also was able to visit the site, Sean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Tara?
Yes.
Alright, very good, Joe? Sorry, oh, sorry, I almost missed ya, that was my fault. Alright, with that, applicants are up, perfect, we'll come back to you in a second, and Jennifer, if you can take us through staff report again.
Yep, alright, so this request is to take 10 and a half acres that Anderson Trucking Services currently own in Linden Township, zoned A-40, and they'd like to change it to industrial. And the property is right along I-94, and it's right south of the city of St. Cloud. So Anderson's own the property to the north as well, which is in the city of St. Cloud, and on the aerial photo, you'll be able to see that their headquarters is a bit to the north there. It's kind of where they got their operations all set up in that area. Yep, that's their headquarters there, and then they own all the way down to this blue triangle property, and yeah, so that's what they want to rezone this Linden Township piece to industrial. There is quite a bit of wetland on the property, and they plan to access the property kind of right along the I-94 right of way, so they won't have any wetland impact with the driveway to get back to this location. There's about eight homes within a half mile of the property. And then, of course, we talked about the other industrial uses that are to the north and northeast. It's not in any overlay districts or areas of concern. Currently being zoned A-40, it is a parcel of record, so it would be allowed to have a home on it. There are homes to the east, but other than that, not a real strong residential area. We did run the Leesas score on this, and it was 51.66, and that's below our threshold of 65, primarily because the soils aren't great because of the amount of wetland there. Linden Township did review the request and recommended approval. If you read through their minutes, you saw there was talk initially about going to commercial, but the township felt industrial was the best zoning fit for the property. So that's what was recommended, and that's what the applicant is asking for. That's all I have on this request, and again, if a decision is made tonight, it would be in front of the county commissioners on April 4th.
Alright, good, thank you. So now, if you want to introduce, or state your name and address for the record?
Scott Follett. 283 LaSalle Court, Northeast St. Michael.
Alright, very good, thanks. Anything that you'd like to add to Jennifer's report?
No, as we grow, we're just looking for, to be proactive about, you know, expanding and that sort of thing, so.
Okay, alright, very good, any questions from members for the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chair, a question on the wetlands. So it's half upland, half wetland, are you intending to avoid the wetlands?
We would not impact the wetlands whatsoever, we'd stay on the upland piece.
Thank you.
Yep.
My understanding, this is primarily for parking, right, they're just of?
Yeah, so, you know, we have visitor, truck driver visitors, right? And as we grow and have more people coming in, this is somewhere where we would have them park for the day. It wouldn't be extended parking, it would be transitional parking, if you will. They're required to come into our corporate office at least once a year to get some safety training. This would allow them to park there, rather than, we have a shop that's just east of that, and it's just, it is becoming right there to, yep, more full, and so this would just be a parking lot for that day, day parking.
Yeah, I presume just a site prep, that would just be some kind of class two or class five kind of?
Yeah, we'd take the vegetation off of it and really make it a surface lot that's permeable with gravel.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright.
Not a whole lot of impact right now.
Mr. Chair, maybe a question for staff or the applicant. So you indicated it's gonna be day parking. Are, are the drivers gonna be walking from the parking lot to the facility, or will you carpool them, or?
They would use our shuttle, we have a shuttle van.
Okay, thank you.
We're just gonna change the, they're already doing this today at our, our site there off to the right that you see. And we're shuttling, we have a shuttle van, but it's becoming more and more compacted with equipment, and so we just changed the route of the shuttle.
You're shuttling them to your office building, right?
Yeah, we shuttle them to our office, so it's less than a mile either way, yep.
Good, go ahead, Joe.
The, the road, I believe that it ends at a cul-de-sac at the present time, where the road ends, is that, is that a township road, or is that a private drive?
That's, that's a township road, well, actually, it might be a St. Cloud road.
It's in the city of St. Cloud.
So have you had discussion as far as the, is that road gonna be extended, or will that be a private drive where that road ends?
It would be a private drive across our property.
Okay.
Yep, we own the property from the cul-de-sac to the said site.
Is emergency service and snow?
Yeah, and, and that's already, the, the road's really already there, it's not paved or anything, it's, it's a gravel road. And, no, we don't plow it in the wintertime right now, but we would, of course, if this is approved.
And there's one home down there, is there, they've got access to off that road, is that correct?
Their, their driveway is before the cul-de-sac, actually.
Right, and so that part's maintained?
Yeah, yep, this, our entrance would be past that, past what's currently maintained.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to make it a condition, any of the topsoil removed for the parking area be used for a berm to separate the parking area from the wetland?
We would love that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Rather than hauling it out, we'd, we'd love that.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, Mr. Chair, we aren't able to add conditions on a rezoning, but something to keep in mind if they're in front of us again for any other permits, for sure.
But it's a good question, and to your point, you probably don't want to pay to haul it out of there, and the berm's good for everybody, so.
Sure, if that's favorable to you guys, we'd include that into our build plan. We'd just take that vegetation and make a berm to separate the, because we don't want anything going in the wetlands either, right? That's just, we don't want to deal with, so, yeah, a berm would be great. And, and I, the, the plans that I've kind of drawn up actually tips that piece towards 94 rather than towards the wetlands, so any sort of runoff would go to there, I don't want to deal with anything going to the wetlands, so.
Good, a good point, any other questions for the applicant or staff?
Question, the lot just to the north, the parcel just to the north of that? Is that one, what you're saying, you're currently using for overflow parking?
We don't use that at all, right now, we're using our shop, which is just off the screen here, yeah, right there to the right, that's our, that's our maintenance shop, and that's where we're parking now, that's off of Connerwood 75.
Is the parcel to the north of this one already zoned?
It is, it is not, I'm dealing with that with St. Cloud.
Just trying to figure out why you would skip the one in the middle.
Cause. There's more usage, land uses that I could use for that in the future, so this makes sense for us to put the trucks there right now, where if we ever, we can do one more addition from what we just did now, and, and so if we ever had to do something more there, we could build a building there. So, this one has the least amount of usable space on it, and we don't need that much, so I don't want to necessarily put it on that piece.
Thanks for clarification.
This is a good question, because I was looking at this earlier, wondering the same thing until I realized it was city, so. Good, alright, any other questions? Alright, with that, we can move to the public hearing, and if anyone here from the public on this one, feel free to come up to the podium. Again, not seeing a rush, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Rich, thank you, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those oppose, alright, public hearing is closed. So with that, any further discussion on this item before moving to findings of fact? Hearing done, I'll roll into that. So number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not? Let's say it's, the intent of this being industrial, and I stated commercial as I was announcing this, but it is industrial, not commercial, and this would, to me, make sense for the location and be consistent with zoning ordinances for that use. Anyone see that differently? Alright, so number two then, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, it does conform. And we look at our business goals and objectives to rural business policies. Number three, to encourage rural businesses seeking expansion in agricultural areas to locate near, near, near major transportation corridors.
Very good, thank you, Sean. Number three is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it's compatible with the area, you look at the different buildings, businesses that are investing in that direction, it fits.
Only thing inconsistent is those trucks will be sitting there versus one flying by on the freeway, right? Alright, four, has the applicant demonstrated that the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? I would say similar to the previous applicant, this is a thought-out plan, it's not just a quick a, a quick thing looking to rezone. This is part of an ongoing, long-term plan for the business. That to me is, kind of shows that a lot of stuff's been thought through and it's a good decision. Any other thoughts there? And we move on to five. Any other issues pertinent to this matter?
The township passed it unanimously.
Township approval.
And, and advised the, it to be zoned as industrial.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you, Rich. Anything else? If not, a motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion to pass.
All right, recommend approval. Thank you, Rich.
Got motion.
Seconded by Sean. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So motion recommend approval. We'll go on to the county commissioners on the 4th. So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. So that takes us to agenda item number three. And that is to consider a rezoning request submitted by Jason and Jill Beck of Kimball, Minnesota, according to section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439, to rezone approximately 2.4 acres from the Residential 5 zoning district to the R10 Residential 10 zoning district. And rezoning approximately 2.4 acres from the R10 to R5. The property is part of Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Cedar Prairie, lying at the end of Badger Road in section 36 of Main Prairie Township. Property addresses are 14175 and 14181 Badger Road in Kimball. Quick roll call of members who visited the site. Jason?
Yes, during the initial site visit.
Okay, good. Dave?
Yes, I did.
And I also was previously during the earlier site visit. That takes us to Sean.
Yes.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Tara?
Yes.
And Jill?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And I see our applicants are up. We'll come back to you in a second. And Jennifer, if you can take us through the staff report.
Yes. So this was before the planning commission in November. And then it was at the request of the applicant, it was tabled for the applicant to take a little more time to figure out exactly how this rezoning should look. So she did that and she worked with her surveyor to come up with a proposed rezoning line that would work for their planned use. That's what we have in the packets here. Basically, what they want to do is swap. So they have two parcels right now. One is R5 and one is R10. And they want to swap 2 and 2.4 acres so they can realign these parcels. So what you can see on the map there is their home site is on the south, plus that green, that would become all R10. And then the blue rectangle up above would become R5 and would be joined with the lot to the north. So that's how they want to swap. And then this map shows, they did some analysis of the lake setback because school section is a natural environment lake, so it has a 200-foot setback. So they threw the setbacks on there from the lake and the property lines. And there is space in there for home sites. So they, that's how they landed on this configuration. So that in a nutshell is what their request is. And the benefit of this is they end up with the same amount of acres in each lot that they currently have. One thing that was a concern was their home site on the south. They have some animal units there. And so with their, with them keeping the same acreage, R10, then they can maintain their same animal units. So that was one of the goals. So if you were out there, you saw the property's kind of grassland with some woods on it. There's some wetland, especially on that northern piece. And let's see, so the, the property on the south, I mentioned the animal units, they are registered for four animal units, which they'll be able to keep if this is approved. And again, if you were out there, you saw that it's sort of a residential area, Lakeshore Residential, as you're driving back into there. And some rural residential use. So this is not going to change the overall amount of homes that are allowed versus what's there now due to the lake setback. It really isn't going to change the amount of homes that could fit on that property. In the comp plan, it's in the ag or rural area in our county comp plan. They did go to the township and got a recommendation of approval from the township. And I don't have anything from the public on this one. I don't have any written correspondence. And if approved or if decided on tonight, it would go to the commissioners on April 4th.
All right, very good. Thanks, Jen. All right, applicant interest, if you don't mind. Jill, state your name, address, everything for the record. And Dan, probably you as well.
Yep. Jill Beck, 14175 Badger Road in Kimball.
All right, very good. I'm Dan Crone, 26183 133rd Avenue, Cold Spring, Minnesota. And I'm the surveyor that did the surveying on the project.
All right, very good. Anything you would like to add to Jennifer's report?
I think Jennifer's report was right on. Basically, this rezone is kind of just to reconfigure the density units that are out there so that we have some buildable space due to the setback from the natural environment lake. So it's not really an ask to get additional density or anything. It's basically reconfiguration of the parcels and the zoning to allow the applicant to kind of use the land the way it was, with, with the rights they had, kind of.
And since we have a couple of new members, just as maybe an update, this one was kind of continued as, there's some things discussed, some things discovered during the last meeting that just made, kind of, the applicant reconsider how they had it configured. So they went and did some additional configuring. So I'm trying to think, was that in November?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was in November. So, very good there.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Joe.
Could you go back to the previous, the aerial, the pictorial? Just for understanding, as we move forward with the discussion. So the green hatched area, do, are we ending up with a total of three sites or we, do we have two sites?
Two.
Mr. Chair, good question, Commissioner Persky. We would end up, potentially they would end up with three.
Okay.
That's a good clarification, yes.
So then the green hatched area would actually be the third site and, and then the, because here's where my question's going to come, is that what will be the access for that green hatched area?
Yeah. Good, oh, no, this one is good. Okay, so this is the green hatched area.
Yeah.
That's going to become part of their building site. And that'll be their same driveway they've always used, up here to Badger.
Okay.
And then they would have a home site here and a home site, this lot would have one building site. This is kind of showing, there's a couple of different areas that can meet setbacks.
Okay, go back to the, the other pictorial. So where's that, that third site?
So...
Because we don't have that drawn in there, do we not?
One would be here.
Yeah.
And then the other one would be in this hashed area. And they would both come up here to Badger Road.
Okay. Because I, I don't think that was clear in, kind of in the description. I was, I was looking at it that they were going to, the green was going to be connected to the, the regular homestead.
Yep.
And the blue was going to go into the regular piece. But, but there is another spot that, that would actually be able to be split out.
You're right, you're right.
Is that been split yet?
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, good question. If this is approved, then they would do a replat.
Okay.
And they, so that would be, yeah. That would be a replat process.
All right. Yep. All right. Any other questions for the applicant or staff at this point, for members? All right, pretty straightforward. With that, does anyone hear from the public on this item? I'm not seeing anyone come up. I think a motion would be in order on public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, so moved.
All right, thank you, Jason. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Jason, seconded by Sean to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any other discussion on this item before moving to finding of facts? All right. Well, with that then, number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not? I would say in this case, the difference is the size and we're really just doing a flip-flop within that same property. So that's about as consistent as you're going to get with rezoning. Must anyone see this differently? All right. And then number two then, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. Under the living goals, under the accessing dwelling unit policies, sort of support a mix of housing that's appropriate for each zoning district. As you mentioned, we're flipping these, so it's going to be appropriate for the district. And then also manage the impacts of growth and development in the county's rural character. We're not really changing anything in the larger parcel, so we're just moving lines.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't see any significant change there.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Kind of rolls into number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not? Kind of like you just cited, Jason, it's just redrawing lines. It doesn't really change the neighborhood at all in this particular case. So, unless someone feels differently on it, I would say it is compatible. Number four, has the applicant demonstrated the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance? Sorry, how has the applicant demonstrated the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
I think the applicant demonstrated it through a request to have further time to review it and then also sought out professional advice from Mr. Crone.
Yep, very good. Looked at setbacks and, and a variety of things, how to best utilize that piece of land. So, very good. Thanks, Rich. Then number five, any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Township approved it again unanimously.
Yep. And I think it's good to go to the township ahead of time for that as well. So that is definitely pertinent. Anything else? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of this application.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Sean and seconded by Rich to recommend approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion to recommend approval. Move on to the...
Thank you.
Come on your board, yep. Thank you. All right. And that takes us to agenda item number four. And that's to consider an interim use permit request submitted by Clark and, is it Aaron? I'm sorry. Aaron, okay. Aaron McQueen of Cold Spring to sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.96A of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439. The request is to operate a vacation home rental located on Lot 1, Block 2 of Winters Lakeshore Lots in section 28, lying west of Osterpoint Road and east of Craze Lake in Wakefield Township. The property address is 16796 Osterpoint Road in Cold Spring. Real quick roll call of members who visited the site. Jason?
Nope.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
All right. I also was. Sean?
Yes.
All right. And that takes us to Mike.
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Tara?
Yes.
Joe? Yes, all right, very good. So with that, and so you came up, thank you. Jennifer, if you're ready, for staff report.
Yep. Okay, so this is another one that was actually before you, earlier in September of 2022. The planning commission tabled it at that time to allow for Wakefield Township to make a decision on their moratorium that they had on vacation rentals. So Wakefield Township did lift their moratorium. They didn't make any changes to their ordinance, so they simply went along with what the county has. However, this application was in prior to the changes. So the previous vacation home rental standards apply since the application was in before the changes were effective. So, we're looking at it under that, under the former ordinance standards. The lot is an acre, so the lot size is not an issue. It meets that easily. And as you know, the access is from Osterpoint Road. This original cabin was constructed in 1977, had additions put on it in 2015 and 2018. So it's within shoreline. Of course, it's on Craze Lake, which is part of the Horseshoe Chain. Part of the property is in Flood Plain. Let's see. Let's get to the standards here for the vacation rental. So again, operating under the previous standards, the water test is good for nitrates and bacteria. Septic system is compliant. It's a three-bedroom home. Based on the size of the bedrooms and the capacity of their septic system, they will be limited to seven people. Yep. So they do need to have three off-street parking spaces, which they have enough space for Let's see here. Our, our licensing staff, excuse me, licensing staff did go out there and do a consultation visit. So they know what they need to do to be eligible for the license. Things like smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and such. So that'll all be reviewed for the final time before their license is issued. So if the planning commission were to recommend approval of this, the conditions we would suggest are that you would set an expiration date. They're requesting three years, which would bring us to December 31st, 2025. Unless you wanted to go three years from the actual board approval date, which would be...
I was just going to ask that exact question, which ended in being like April 1st or something.
April 26, yeah. The maximum occupancy and advertising of the home would be seven persons. A condition that they obtain a lodging license. A condition that the flow measurement device is required to be installed on the septic. And then they have to keep measurement readings and monitor the system, record those monthly, and then make those records available to the department upon request. A condition that they need to keep a report that details the use of the home by recording at a minimum the name and address, phone number and vehicle license plate number of all the guests that use the property. And again, make that report available to the department upon request. That they would post a sign in letters no less than four inches in height stating, "Swim at your own risk at the water edge or on the dock." And have one U.S. Coast Guard approved type for throwable personal flotation device conspicuously displayed on a booth or stall and available for emergency response. The flotation device shall be serviced and maintained in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendations. And then lastly, a condition that all local zoning requirements must be complied with prior to licensure. And on this one, I don't have any...
All right. Very good. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record?
Clark McQueen, 16796 Osterpoint Road, Cold Spring.
All right, very good.
And Aaron McQueen, same address.
Yep. All right, very good. Thank you. Anything you'd like to add to Jennifer's report?
Unless there are specific questions for us, I feel like we really covered a great bit of detail the last time we met here. So nothing's changed on our end.
Okay, very good. And just, we have a couple of new members since the, the year's switched over. So if you want, it'd probably be, just be a good thing, just to kind of restate the objective and why you're applying forward.
I'm happy to. So, you know, last time we did talk a, a bit about the history of the property, but really, I think what's important today is the procedures, the operations that, you know, I kind of spearheaded for this to make sure that everything was very clearly stated for, you know, the Airbnb guests and also for our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is very tight-knit. Everybody knows each other. And so really just kind of keeping in the spirit of that, I have a house manual that says everything that you could possibly need to know about. Not only the property itself and how to use it, but also the neighborhood, the rules, the quiet times, where to park, how slow to drive at all times. So, you know, I really dug into that because it's, you know, this is our neighborhood too. And everything that is required of the county is, if it's applicable and of, you know, for the renters, that it would be stated also in that house manual. Oh, yes, thank you. And that we still do have a property manager that is literally a stone throw away, which was a, you know, which is a big deal to have somebody who's keeping an eye on the place and knows neighbors and feels comfortable, you know, being in that position. So I think, I think that kind of covers it, but I'm certainly willing to ask, answer any questions.
All right, very good. All right, very good, thanks. Any questions by members for the applicants or staff on this one?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
And this may have been addressed a previous, with the previous commission, but I noticed there was an email shared today that talked about Wakefield Township having a moratorium on projects like this dated, let's see if I can find it here, February 3rd of 2022. I noticed the application for this was June of 2022, so an application was received while there was a moratorium in place? Is that typical? Or is that, and I guess then my question is, if Wakefield Township needed time to figure out what they wanted to do, whose rules are being followed in this request? Is it Wakefield Township? Did they adopt the county, countywide? Whose rules are we following?
Yeah, good questions.
Really good questions.
Yeah, so you're right, it was submitted, the application was submitted when Wakefield had a moratorium. Since the county didn't have a moratorium on, we're obligated to take it and process it. They did end up agreeing to let it continue until the township lifted their moratorium or made a decision on it. So it was submitted under the county's former rules, and also what Wakefield had in place at the time. So now currently, the county has new rules that were effective January 1st, Wakefield's match ours, they matched ours before, they match ours now, but we're operating under the rules in place at the time the application was submitted.
Now, that segues into a question I was going to have, because the township, if they've now adopted the new standards, would those not supersede? They can always be more restrictive, never less restrictive than the county, right? So wouldn't the township requirements, if they match the current county requirements, still supersede whatever is in the application?
I'll let Angie address that.
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg, Environmental Services, and Heidi Stahlberger, the Clerk and Zoning Administrator for Wakefield, is here, so when you hear, take your public hearing, you might hear from her on that, but I've attended multiple meetings at Wakefield on this very issue. My understanding is that they did not intend for this application to have to meet the rules that are in effect in January of 2023. It would have been the fact that this application was submitted prior to. That's my understanding of what they did, but I cannot speak for the township. And Jennifer can identify the few things that are different with the old and the new, and their very subtle differences, and we had given them some, McQueen some options to even withdraw and go under the new rules and be provisional, but there's some slight differences that we can explain if that's important.
Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
So has Wakefield Township adopted the Stearns County's rules?
Yes, that's correct.
By default, really, is how that works. Mr. Chair and Dave, is that unless they're different, they adopt ours by reference. So this isn't a common situation where we have had, what, four to six townships adopt moratoriums on this issue, and it's been fluctuating back and forth, who's doing what, when, how, what rules are in effect at the time. So the county's always maintained the position that we act on the rules that were in effect at the time the application was submitted. So if Wakefield wants to take a different position on that, then we need to hear from like Wakefield Township. I can't speak for them on that, but I do not think that's their intent.
All right. Very good. Well, let's go to the public hearing, unless anyone else has questions at the moment. Go ahead, Jason.
While we have a chance now, Mr. Chair, quick question for the applicant. What deadline would you like to see? Would you like to see April 4th of 2026?
May I ask, is there a reason, does it matter? And...
You've asked for three years, so we can give you three calendar years, or it can expire?
I see, yes, I would like the, I would like it from the April meeting.
Three extra months.
Yes, that's what I like.
Very good.
Great.
All right. Before going to the public hearing, actually, I do have one more question for the applicant. So you guys, I know you applied before the new changes, was there something in the changes that were made on January 1st at the county level that impacts this application? It doesn't make a difference anyway? Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, if I could just maybe highlight real quick what the differences are. With the new regulations, the biggest difference is now we require more septic capacity for rentals, so we would have to relook at that, they may only qualify for six renters instead of seven, but we'd have to look at that. The other additional things that come into play with the new rules are notifying the local fire department of their intention to do a rental and getting documentation that the fire department feels they can adequately service the property. Installing two, minimum of two cameras outside for monitoring the number of people there and the number of vehicles, and monitoring that there's no parking on the street are the big things for the cameras. Cameras, fire department, possibly occupancy would change because of the septic capacity situation. The other big difference is if they are renting to eight or fewer people, then they would actually just be a provisional use, and it wouldn't be in front of us for a public hearing.
Oh.
So those are the big differences with the new rules that would apply to them.
Okay, all right. Very good, thanks Jennifer for that.
It goes, what, two years, three years, five years?
Yes.
Licensing.
You're right, yep, with the, the new ordinance would allow their initial request to be a two-year permit, and then second request could be three years, and then third request, if no complaints are received, could be five years.
Okay. Very good, thank you, Jennifer. With that then, let's open it up to the public hearing. All right. And Heidi, if you'd just state name, address for the record.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Heidi Stahlberger, Wakefield Township Clerk and Zoning Administrator, 22295 Frostery Road, Cold Spring, Minnesota. So on February 23rd, I shared a letter or an email with the staff, the environmental services staff, regarding this request, because the meeting was on a date when I couldn't attend. And so I'll just read that to you. Dear Ms. Wenskowski, Wakefield Township has received a notice of public hearing for Clark and Erin McQueen to operate a vacation home rental located on Osterpoint Road in Wakefield Township. The Wakefield Township Board met recently and reviewed the request and notice of public hearing. Wakefield Township had a 12-month moratorium in effect on section 6.62 Short Term Rental as of February 3rd, 2022. The Wakefield Township Board took action by motion to lift the moratorium on January 5th, 2023, after a productive study period conducted by the Wakefield Township Planning Commission. The Town Board watched closely as the Planning Commission navigated the ordinance study. The Planning Commission suggested changes parallel to the updates made by Stearns County reflected in the January 1, 2023 Updated Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439, with few exceptions. The Wakefield Township Planning Commission made a recommendation to the Town Board to concur with the Stearns County ordinance, with the exception of pending requests for short-term rentals to abide by the updated ordinance regardless of the submitted date of application. When Wakefield Township Board met on January 5th, 2023, they reviewed a pending short-term rental IUP application. The Town Board made a decision to request that the only remaining application for McQueen be required to abide by the updated ordinance as written. Wakefield Township understands that nearly all items of the McQueen Short Term Rental IUP requests meet the current ordinance and respectfully requests that the Stearns County Planning Commission to consider the enforcement of all aspects of the IUP application to comply with the updated Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance as of January 1, 2023. Thank you for passing this information along to the Stearns County Planning Commission. And so as of February 22nd, that was the communication date, and since that time, nothing has changed with regard to the stance from Wakefield Township on this. The reason why Wakefield Township did not change their ordinance to become more restrictive on this application was because it was the only one, and the cost to update our ordinance is prohibitive for one application. And so we're just respectfully requesting that all aspects of this IUP follow the updated Stearns County ordinance. So, and we did lift the moratorium with, with no restrictions, and we are not more restrictive in our ordinance than Stearns County, so therefore, we have adopted by reference because we've made no changes.
All right, very good.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could, could you explain why Wakefield had a moratorium in place?
So, there was a lot of pressure on these short-term rentals in the Munson Township area, and the way that it was laid out, there were many, many of these IUP requests on a road that goes in and out of Munson and Wakefield Township. And so many of those residents that were upset, the permanent residents that were upset about these short-term rentals and had bad experiences with them, kind of formed a group or a pact, and they spoke at some of the township meetings. They definitely spoke at Munson Township, and then a group of them came to Wakefield Township. And Wakefield Township Board then took the action to study the ordinance, that section of the ordinance, to make sure that, you know, if this was such a big deal in, in this, in the county and in the neighboring township, that, you know, Wakefield Township wasn't missing something, because we weren't having an issue with it. We had very few short-term rentals and didn't realize how many applications were coming our way. So shortly after we placed the moratorium, we did hear from a number of people who were interested in submitting IUPs for this.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi, for correcting me. Appreciate it, I'm glad you were here.
All right, very good. Anyone else here from the public on this item? All right, if not, take a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Thanks, Dave. Motion by Dave, seconded by Rich to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Motion to close, close public hearing is moved forward. All right, so any further discussion on this one before moving to finding of facts?
Mr. Chair, if I could just pipe in a little bit, so based on that information, which I'm very glad that Heidi was here to clarify that, is that really, McQueens could withdraw their request for an interim use permit because they're going to be required to follow the township's rules anyway, which are provisional use. So Jen and I were just chatting about it, and I, there is really no harm in the IUP being granted, other than it would be not, it would be moot, honestly.
So in a lot of ways, we wouldn't even have to vote on it.
Right, but if, if the applicants don't want to withdraw, then I would ask that you do go through your findings, and whether or not you apply or don't apply the township's requirements would be up to you.
Can they get their, would they be able to get reimbursed if they withdrew at this point yet?
Not at this point. We did offer that to them before this hearing, and yeah, we have a lot of time already into this.
Yeah, fair, fair statement. And then as far as provisional, is there a time limit on that? On those provision, I'm not sure what the time limit is, is it, that's a two-year?
That's the two-year for their first request, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so sort of dovetailing with that question, so if the applicants choose to withdraw their permit and go with the provisional route, is there a fee for the provisional application?
Mr. Chair, Jason, we could, just because this has kind of been a really up and down situation for applicants and townships, we could take the fee and apply it loosely, if you will, to the provisional use application, knowing that it's two different processes, but I think people kind of got stuck in the middle as well. So while we won't refund the $550, we could, I don't even know what the fee is off the top of my head, but we could transfer that over to the, to the provisional use, if that makes sense.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, I know you're probably not the right person to answer this, so if you do, I'll be interested to hear your response. So Wakefield Township has asked us to review this under the current ordinance, they applied under the previous ordinance. If we use the current ordinance standards, are we in any legal jeopardy for applying an ordinance that didn't exist at the time of the application?
Mr. Crown, Jason, so if, my answer to that would be, if the Planning Commission, if they don't withdraw, and they want you to act, and your, one of your findings is that you want to be consistent with Wakefield Township's request, and if they would sue the county for that decision, could they, yes, anybody can sue the county for anything. Now, would they win? I don't know, this is, this is muddy enough where there's definitely merit in what the process the township went through, and so, and typically, the Planning Commission, Stearns County has a long history of following what townships want, right? Intergovernmental, intergovernmental communication, so I think that would likely hold through, but none of us can say for sure, because that would be up for a judge.
Help, attempt to clarify here. My question to clarify is, what benefit or non-benefit does it have for us to withdraw? I mean, we're good with withdrawing if we technically don't need you, your approval now?
Yeah.
If all we need is Wakefield Township's, is there a benefit or a hindrance for us to withdraw? Again, I, I want to withdraw, which answers, which takes care of what you're asking for, because, and then, we don't need your approval, all we need is Wakefield Township's, but is there a benefit to not withdrawing? Does it matter? We don't need, but we just need Wakefield's townships, right?
What's...
So we just need Stearns County's use permit, right?
Yeah.
Right, so the benefit, I think, clerk, would be the fee, right? Because we would take some, we would take some of that $550 and apply it.
If we withdraw or don't withdraw?
Correct, if you do withdraw. If you force action tonight, then you got to do something separate for the next thing.
But if we don't withdraw, what difference does that make, what does that do, really?
Well, if you don't withdraw and you force them to make a decision, the decision could be a denial, and then you no longer have a part of a fee waiver, basically.
Right, right.
What we can answer for you tonight, Jennifer and I cannot, we would need someone to do a septic analysis, is to let you know whether or not that number would change, your occupant number would change, so...
Everything else, we've already met, camera-wise and fire department-wise, we're good, it would be that, but I think we're okay there.
I do have a quick question, I'm trying to follow along here. So under the original application, that was for a term of three years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so under the new regulations, those are only good for two years, correct?
Again, initially, right, it's two years and then three, or two and then five.
I'm thinking money here, you know, I mean, that was a $550, you know, plus all the others.
But if we withdraw, she will, they will roll that fee into paying for...
An extra year?
This, no, you won't get the extra year, no, you'll get two years and then what? What was it, two years and then three and then five? Yep, sorry.
Yep, that's correct, that's how it goes, as long as there's no valid complaint submitted.
Your first one's two years, second one's three, third one's five.
But, you know, originally, it was the three years, and so that is a consideration to...
My guess, I don't know this, you could verify it, but I don't think the fee's probably the same as it is going through this whole process.
Right.
The application process is a lot more extensive, so...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I can speak to the fee, so under provisional use, your first application is $400, and that's for the two years, and then when the two years is up, you want to redo another provisional use, then if there hasn't been any complaints, it's $300, so it actually gets less expensive as you renew, and then the, the next time you renew, it's $200, so that's how the fee schedule is set up right now.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, yeah, for sure.
Jennifer, can you clarify, does the, the septic analysis, that will apply in either way? Would they go through the provisional, or if we do the interim?
If the Planning Commission requires, and the county, if the Planning Commission Board require they meet the current standards, then that is 75 gallons capacity per day per person. The previous threshold was 50 gallons per day per person. So if, if you go with the township's recommendation, which is to follow the new standards, it would be 75, whether it's IUP or provisional. would be 75, whether it's IUP or provisional.
Do we know what of that fee? If we withdraw, do we know what of that fee will be moved over to the $400 fee?
We wouldn't charge the $400 fee.
Oh, that's what you do, okay. Yeah. Oh, unless you disagree, there's no reason to proceed for us. We would just withdraw. It makes the most sense for, I think, us and you all, really.
Yeah, what's the best working relationship it's between you and the township?
Right. So in our, our best interest and everybody here, I think we then would officially withdraw this application?
Yep.
Allow that fee to be moved over and paid for this first two years.
Whether this is, consider this unofficial. By sitting in your seat, that's the route I'd go.
Yep.
And Mr. Chair, I was just gonna say, if you both wanted a bit more time to speak privately, we can certainly just take this at the end of the agenda and take our other items, too. I don't want you to feel forced to make a decision at this moment, so.
No, and that's why I think we asked the right, the question.
So, yeah, the, the, you know, the extra little things that are added to this are not, not a big deal. It's really just, you know, making sure that the money makes sense and it's going where it should be going, based on, you know, what I thought when I applied for this permit to begin with. And that's really my bottom line concern, you know?
And the additional things, like I said, we, other than having the septic rechecked, the camera thing, we've already got covered. We've got cameras all over the place.
There's a few just little things that are, you know, very easy.
I think as far as what you added, we're good.
Mr. Chair, I, I guess, I, I'm having a little trouble understanding the withdrawal in that if we would do approve it under the present standards, it would go to the board and then be approved and it would be able to be moved forward, I mean, without any problem.
I think the fear is that it might not be approved if we're, don't.
Because we'd be looking at it under the old rules.
I will tell you what, if you do look at it under the old rules, you're gonna run into problems.
Right.
Okay? But if you were to put it under the new rules, and could you make that modifications as putting it in the conditions?
That's what we were just saying, that, Joe, though, based on the new rules?
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, you don't even need to have it go through the, the planning commission, so therefore they can.
If the change in the septic rules is gonna change the number of people. But it will have to go back to the planning, to Wakefield Township, will it not?
No. It's really moot, this whole.
No, that's why I was asking. So it's moot, I don't have to go through them and all I have to do is get a, a conditional use permit from.
Then I, then, yeah, that'll, that's fine.
Yep.
If, if that's.
Basically, all we gotta do is throw in the application and we're done.
Yep.
It is, yeah, on a new application, fairly simple.
So, Mr. Chair, do we have to officially say we accept the withdrawal?
Well, I don't, I've never run into these, but I don't think so. If they want to withdraw, they can withdraw.
Okay.
In the record and I think there's a clear understanding, so.
Yeah.
This is, thank you.
Here for the process.
Several months.
So just for clarification, you are withdrawing the permit?
We are officially withdrawing.
We are, and so I assume that I can get with Heidi and figure out what else needs to happen at this point. Thank you all for your time. We appreciate this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the patience. This has been an interesting year.
Well, that's all right. You got through it, thank you.
I had that reapply and it's just, they'll just go with the regular permit.
Right. So that takes us to agenda item number five, and that is to consider a plat entitled Hidden Cove Sheds submitted by, submitted by Rhonda Green, consisting of six lots, one residential lot and five non-residential lots, in accordance with Stearns County subdivision ordinance tooth, number two, 230, and land use and zoning ordinance number 439. The proposed plat is 17.39 acres and is Lot 2, Block 1 of Schrumel addition in Section 28 of Collegeville Township. The property lies west of County Road 50, east of Hidden Cove Road, and north of 271st Street. The property address is 27257 County Road 50 in Cold Spring, Minnesota.
Mr. Chair, as with the last meeting, I might have a perceived conflict of interest, so I'm gonna withdraw from discussion.
All right. Thank you, Jason. All right. With that, and I'm gonna exclude Jason on this one then, members who visited the site, we'll go with you, Dave?
Yes, I did.
I also was able. Sean?
Yes.
We have Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Tara?
Yes.
All right, very good. Joe, you've been out there as well?
Yep.
All right, very good. So with that, Jennifer, thanks to your staff report.
Yep. All right. So this one, we did talk about back in November, another one that was before us previously, and it was continued in order to obtain comments from the DNR. So the DNR had spoke up at that time and hadn't had enough time to fully review it. So the planning commission continued it and then we also were hoping that Collegeville Township could attend the meeting as well. So those were the reasons. But I'll just kind of start over because there's a couple of new planning commission members here. So what we've got is a property that they're proposing to split into six lots. So the zoning is agricultural 40. They have a home, they're only allowed one home. They want to split it into six lots and the five new lots would only be allowed to have a shed on them. And as you know, it's within shoreline of Big Fish Lake. It's not riparian, it's not on the lake, but it's right across the street. So typically with a new plat with homes, you'd have to show septic sites on each lot. They don't need to do that for this plat, other than Lot 3, which, which has the building site. So Lot 3 is the lot that has the current house and outbuildings and has the two septic sites identified, setbacks are met. That lot, the property right now is registered for a few animal units. Now, with the plat is done and approved, Lot 3 will become smaller, I think around six acres. They're not gonna be allowed quite as many animal units, so they'll have to fill out an animal unit reduction form. And that'll be one of the documents recorded with the plat. Access to all of the lots will be from township roads. So County Highway has said the lot, the driveway to the home is currently off of County Road 50 and that can remain. All the new lots would have to come off of the township roads. Stormwater management, so this plat does not create one acre of new impervious surfaces. Therefore, the county ordinance doesn't require them to develop a full blown stormwater plan and implement that. The township, though, did have concerns about stormwater runoff from the property, so the landowner did engage an engineer to do an analysis and find out if this proposed development would increase runoff from the property. The results of that show that it will not increase the rate or volume of runoff from the property. So easements, let's see here, oh, skip that. We do not need a park dedication fee for this because we're not creating new residential lots. I talked about the township review, so they did approve the plat and they approved it with conditions, but the interesting thing is typically townships don't enter into subdivision agreements, so they don't typically have conditions that go along with the plat. I forwarded you an email and I don't know if you all had a chance to read it because I sent it this afternoon. But since the township couldn't be here tonight, I'll just touch on their comments real quick, since I'm at that part in my staff report. But the township supports approval of the plat with the conditions that, that are listed and they were asking the county to carry those through into our agreement. And some of those we do cover. Some of those items are covered in our developer or subdivision agreement. So I'll just go through them real quick. Number one, they're asking us to adhere to the size limit on the shed. 1,800 square feet is what's currently in the ordinance. If the ordinance changes, they could have more. So, so that would be in there. Number two, they want no more than 7,000 square feet impervious surface per lot, and that is what we are saying as well. They were saying that a bathroom could be installed with a holding tank. Our proposal is prohibiting septic systems on the property and water-using devices. And then, number four, no building shall be used as a residential, as a residence at any time. That's what they wanted to say and we can certainly match that as well. Number five, no more than a quarter acre of a garden or tillable acreage shall be allowed. We do include that. Number six, outdoor lighting shall be hooded and not cast beyond the property lines. Yep, we include that. And seven, each owner is responsible for establishing and maintaining vegetation in the, in the entire parcel, including Lot 3. While we don't explicitly state that language by requiring the max impervious of 7,000 square feet and the max garden area of 10,000 square feet, essentially we're saying the rest of it has to be vegetated. So those we do cover. Now, there's some things that they wanted addressed that we aren't covering in our subdivision agreement and those are below, if you could go down Angie, please. Okay. So the items that are not covered and we're not suggesting we add to our agreement would be, all buildings must be approved by an architectural control committee, that they have to be made of steel or wood construction, so those materials, we're not gonna, and having a concrete floor, we don't typically get into any kind of things like that in our agreements. Four, no farm animals, livestock, or foals shall be allowed. We're not proposing to include that. Or five, each property owner shall be permitted to keep on their property one RV. No junk or inoperable vehicles are allowed. We do have language in the agreement that would address that they could store licensed vehicles or boats or that kind of thing on their property. We just aren't saying they can only have one. And then six, no discharging of firearms or hunting shall be allowed. We didn't want to include that in our agreement either. It's not something we regulate in the county zoning world. So in talking with the township, with Craig Guggenberger, the township chair, he agreed that they would be fine if these aren't in the county subdivision agreement, as long as we require the developer record covenants with these items. So we can certainly add a condition that says the developer has to record covenants to address all of these items. The one thing the township did want removed, well, I'll get to that when I get to the conditions. Okay. So, back to the staff report, drainage and utility easements, we always require they have a 10-foot easement along the roads. We did hear back from Sterns Electric, that's who provides the power out here, and they recommend utilities along all the lot lines, not just the road. And so if you want to go along with that, we're suggesting that it would be 12-foot easements along the property lines, which would mean six feet on each property, so 12-foot total easement on each, on those shared property lines. There is a standpipe on the property that's on the west line of Lot 3. This was a project that was implemented, let's see, was it 2008? At any rate, it was a previous project that was done and it was permitted by the state and I think by the federal government. That, it's addressed in the staff report and the permits for that were included in your packet. If you have any other questions on that, we can address that as we go. I think the key is the engineer's report, that the township required that engineering report be done, shows that by changing this property from an ag field to vegetated grassland with 7,000 square feet of impervious on each lot, you're actually gonna see a reduction in the runoff rate and the runoff volume from the property. So, so that's the takeaway there. We did get comments from the DNR and those were included in your packet as well. Essentially, they're not opposed to the plat. If you have questions, we can, I can read that, but that was in your packet. Okay. Well, I can go through the conditions now, if you want me to do that at this time, probably.
Yeah, go through the conditions and then I have a couple of questions, just on clarifying a couple of items that were brought up.
Okay.
Fire away.
Okay. So the first condition would be requiring a declaration of restriction be recorded that requires the two soil treatment areas on Lot 3 shall be maintained in undisturbed and natural state. Those are the two septic sites. We just need to make sure that they're set aside for future septic use. Number two, subdivision agreement. So this would have a number of items. Number one, construction site best management practices shall be used during construction. Number two, the two septic sites that are identified on Lot 3 shall be maintained undisturbed, staked, and roped off before they do any ground disturbing activity on Lot 3. Water-using devices and septic systems are prohibited on lots, prohibited on lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 unless otherwise allowed per item 5B. And actually, I would propose we strike that, unless otherwise allowed per item 5B, and I'll get to that in a minute. Okay, number three, outdoor lighting shall be hooded, not cast light beyond property lines, and comply with Section 7.15 of the zoning ordinance. Number four, a wetland determination shall be required before issuing any construction permit for each lot. Wetland delineations are subject to Minnesota Statute 103G .2242, subdivision 2A, item D. The delineation is valid for five years and the approval date for this one was August 26th of 2022. And letter C there, a 25-foot buffer is required around all delineated wetlands. Vegetation removal, including trees, shrubs, grasses, or other ground covers prohibited in that buffer. And then condition five would be lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 are limited to an accessory structure or antennae, essential services, fence, personal licensed motor vehicle or recreational vehicles, or watercraft storage, outdoor recreation, or private swimming pool, or solar accessory, or a garden tillable acreage not to exceed 1,890 square feet. All other uses on those lots are prohibited. Letter B, lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 shall not contain a residential dwelling unit. The rest of that sentence, or says unless it's rezoned, and the township is, feels very strongly that we take that out. So if you guys want to cross the rest of that sentence out, that would certainly be an option.
They say unless it's rezoned, they want that out?
Yeah. That was part of the township email that we received yesterday, yep.
And again, the present zoning is?
Ag. Ag 40. Yep. So that's why they only get the one home. Now, in full disclosure, if a landowner came in and wanted to ask for a rezoning, we would have to process an application, but this provision that says the lot can't have a home on it would still stand and all the owners in the plat would have to come to us and say, can we please amend the subdivision agreement? First, can we get a rezoning? And secondly, can you amend this? And that would be an uphill battle, of course. The township would have to have input on all of that.
Yep.
So they did, they did ask us to remove that, so you can talk about that when you get to that point in the meeting. Okay, so letter C, Lot 3 is limited to the garden or tillable acreage not to exceed 1,890 square feet, which is the quarter acre that the township asked for. Letter D, accessory structures are limited to 1,800 square feet, maximum sidewall height of 14 feet, maximum building height of 22 feet, unless otherwise allowed in the county zoning ordinance. E, no more than 7,000 square feet impervious is allowed unless the stormwater management plan is implemented in compliance with 7.26 of the zoning ordinance. Letter F, topographic alterations shall comply with the zoning ordinance. And then lastly, in the agreement would be number six, the plat of Hidden Cove Sheds is located in an agricultural area. The construction expansion, operation of feedlots and other ag uses are permitted in this area. The developers therefore acknowledge that future buyers may be exposed to sites, sound, smells, and conditions of modern agriculture. Okay, and then, condition number three here would be requiring a declaration of restriction. Seems kind of redundant, but there is another declaration required that says lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 cannot have a home. That's a whole separate document that gets recorded. Number four, a water supply verification is required to be recorded, stating the water test results for Lot 3 were suitable. Number five, a highway certificate will be recorded with those highway comments, which are in your packet. Number six, a feedlot animal unit reduction form needs to be recorded. And then I would suggest adding that number seven from the township comments, that would be requiring the covenants be recorded with the final plat, addressing the provisions that were reviewed and approved of by Collegeville Township. Those are private covenants, but we would require, if you add this, we would require they come in and get recorded with the plat.
Jennifer, how long do those covenants stay enforced?
I believe it's 30 years.
30 years?
Well, okay.
I've heard, I've seen 10.
Yeah. Good question, Mr. Chair. The enforcement of those covenants is up to the people who live out there, so they have to self-regulate it and enforce them. I don't know, maybe Angie knows if it's case law or statute, but we've been told 30 years is how long they're valid.
Should that be spelled out on number seven? The length or not?
Mr. Chair, Rich, so the answer is yes, there's some statutes related to that, but it also builds in whether or not it can automatically renew. And so none of us are attorneys. I would just assume. And so, none of us are attorneys, I would just as soon not say anything, and then default to whatever real estate law would apply at the time. I would prefer that we try to stay as far away from these private covenants as we can, because we have gotten advice from the attorney's office in the past that we don't have anything to do with these, except for, as we have agreed, or the department would agree, that requiring that document to be recorded. That's not atypical for some PUDs and such, that they go hand-in-hand with the recording. But beyond that, I would say let's just leave it as is.
Yeah. It'd be dangerous if the county's getting prescriptive on every covenant that's out there. Real quick clarification item, my notes, and this, and just think, just a typo, on number five, under the suggested conditions, B, it's, mine's showing lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 5, and I'm assuming the second 5 is 6, right? 5B, lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, no problem, and then we're striking everything after dwelling unit, based on the township request.
Right.
I had a couple of questions on clarification of terms, water-using devices, how are those defined?
The intention there, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, was sinks, toilets, water-using devices in the shed. There was discussion amongst our staff, do we just prohibit wells? And our thought process was, people might want to punch a sandpoint or something for irrigation of their grass out there. So that's why we didn't suggest prohibiting wells entirely, but prohibiting water-using devices in the building.
Could they use pressure washers to wash their vehicles?
That was my point, that, honestly, that was the spirit of my question, because if you have a shed, normally you're gonna put like some kind of drain, you're gonna spray your stuff down after it's gone down salty roads, and depending on the definition, that's, that's a dry shed then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question.
So, as defined, this would be a dry shed, no water-using devices, unless you basically are hauling the jugs of water, right?
Unless you would want to provide further clarification in there.
Yeah.
Somehow.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Chair, the original intent of this was that they don't become
Residential.
Guest cottages. And so, no water in that, no water going into them is a little less enticing for people to use it that way. But you're right, it would be regulating, allowing certain part, water devices.
Yeah.
That's, that's really tough.
Okay.
Want to go further and say plumbing?
Did you say interior plumbing? And then, if you want a outside spigot for washing stuff, you could plumb on the outside of a building. But you could not have any interior plumbing associated with sinks, bathrooms. I don't know, I'm not a plumber, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I, I agree with Mr. Cronin, it is an option, I mean, if you're buying a shed, do you want to wash something off? I mean, it's available use, and it's not the same as an interior sink or bathroom.
Jennifer, did, with, with that being said, and then the usage in the, of the property, what are these, what is the identification as far as property tax of these units, what will that be?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, that is a great question, and I don't have the answer, because I don't, not the assessor's office.
Okay. I, I'm just curious about what we're, what we're doing here, and I, I wanted to know kind of where we're headed with this, because we're putting these sheds on agricultural property? Is they, so are these sheds then agricultural use?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll jump in a little bit, Commissioner Persky, so there, you're taxing how you use your property, right? And so, if you're using your property for an accessory structure, my guess would be, and we can confirm this before it comes to the county board, is that it's gonna be seasonal rec res, non-homestead. And that's likely what it would be, because you're, you're, that would be my guess right now. There, there's no option for these to become ag accessory structures because of the lot size and the proposed use, so the assessor's gonna likely look at it as seasonal rec, rec res, non-homestead.
So, so when I go to the description of the proposal here, I, because I had this question, I didn't know when to interject it, but this seems to be a good time. You give a description that there are six lots, one is residential, and five non-residential lots. So what are they zoned when you have a description as non-residential? So, should those five lots be described as, just as you were saying, Angie, the, the recre, non-recreational?
Jen and I would probably say the same thing on this, but it's, you, how you, zoning is completely separate than taxation.
Yeah, but what, what are we, what are we ending up here? We're saying we're gonna have a residential lot, so that's no longer ag, correct?
No, it wouldn't be a residential lot.
It wouldn't be a residential.
Well, that's what it says, it's a residential lot, we're going with six lots, one residential, five non-residential, so what do we have?
The one residential lot is where the current homestead is.
But, 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 you know, this is coming out of an ag 40, so I'm asking is
Mr. Chair.
Clarification, I guess.
Could I just jump in?
Yes.
So, the zoning on the zoning map is ag 40, and that's not changing because nobody's asking to rezone.
So that's staying.
That'll stay, but the tax class is separate, and interestingly enough, I'm looking right here, the 20, the tax class for this property has been ag homestead in the past, for 2023, it's actually residential homestead. So the assessor's office have actually recognized it doesn't qualify for ag homestead anymore, perhaps because they aren't farming 10 acres, or they don't have enough animal units or something. So it's, even though the zoning is ag, the tax class is residential homestead right now, and as Angie suggested, when it's split, those, each of those lots will probably become seasonal recreational, seasonal residential recreational would be our guess.
And this isn't, this might be new to this planning commission, but it, it's not new to the Sterns County Assessor's Office, so I know we can get an answer for you on that, or for the board.
Sure.
Can I make one comment on that? So we're gonna turn this into a seasonal residential zoning class, which is typical and normal. And then I'm going back one comment about the water. I do agree, and I know the developer agrees, we can limit the inside water in the buildings because we don't want it to go that route. But if we're gonna allow them to be seasonal recreational, or use it as a shed, can we have an outside spigot so they can use it as a shed from a washing standpoint? I don't know how we clarify that, I don't know how we get it in black and white, but that's a consideration. If we're gonna tax the property owners with that tax, because it won't be an ag tax, and I understand that, but just something to consider, if we're gonna accept taxes on that type of use, should we allow them at least some type of use for that?
I mean, we're from a condition, I think, on 2B, changing it from water-using devices to interior plumbing and septic systems are prohibited, I think that would cover the spirit of not making these things.
I like that, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. I didn't bring it up, I was just repeating it. All right.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Tara.
My question's related to the stormwater analysis. The applicant re-submitted a stormwater analysis that was completed that showed that there will be less runoff. In light of the discussion you just had with reclassification on the tax, a question I have is, how do they come up with, what is the current land use that they're val, or that they're saying is basically agricultural, a crop, crop use basically here? Because when I was out there, and I've driven past it a million times, it's, I don't.
It's all grass now.
Yeah, it's all grass, it's been grass for a long time, so how do they come up with the stormwater calcs to show that it's gonna be reduced?
I can try that one, so my understanding is that, yeah, it's currently grassland, but because it's owned ag, and there's an option to make it tillable, that's an option, so because of that classification of the ag, that's what it looked at for that standpoint, from an engineer's standpoint. It is grass, I don't disagree with you, but they would have the right within the ag use to till it up and put row crops or any type of ag use. So, the analysis for the stormwater was looking at that option versus what this would bring in front of them, and that's where they said it actually improved the situation.
I just wanted to clarify that.
See, I'm in agreement with what you're talking about that, because when I see the possibility of all these sheds being built, then the, the water coming out the roof of the sheds, that's not the same as water on a whole piece of property percolating down, now you got water coming out the, off the sidewalls of all these sheds, and you gotta flow, so I, I don't, I agree with what she's talking about with the when you have less runoff.
I think, just something to keep in mind here, and, and again, unless someone else is an engineer on, on the water side of it, you have to look at what it's currently zoned, and that, that is, right now, the current conditions with it being grass, a grass field is perfect, you can't get a better situation than that. But nothing would have to change to go and till all that up, and, and then you get a hardpan building up with a lot of our current ag practices, now that ends up creating far more runoff than, than having any vegetation there, which this would kind of require. And I, I would guess that that's what their engineering culture is based on, so.
Correct, I just wanted to, I just wanted clarification on that on the record, so that we could understand where the stormwater analysis was coming from, because it currently, and has been for a long time, just grass.
You're correct.
Good question. Okay. And one last clarification, so all of these requests by the township, we basically, that is all taken care of in the covenant, so things like each property owner shall be permitted to keep on their property one recreational vehicle. As I would read that, that'd also be like, you'd have one ATV, one four-wheeler in a shed, right?
Did you say in the shed, Mr. Chair, or?
Well, on the property, or is that just stating outside?
I, I do believe it's.
It says keep on their property.
We might want to clarify that.
Anyway. Yeah, there's some, there's some things that are tricky there, but that's not what we'd have to worry about anyway tonight, from my understanding, correct?
Correct, that would be part of the private covenants, what we are proposing to say is that they could store licensed motor vehicles or boats on their property.
Yeah, okay, that would.
Their, their own personal, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I can cover one more thing on the subdivision versus the covenant. The applicant, in my discussions with the applicant, I don't believe there's any issue with the subdivisions restrictions and things listed in the, in the, the report tonight. The covenants, I'm gonna say that the developer's gonna deal with the township directly, they have to go back for the final plat at the township level. And obviously, the requirement would be to record those covenants with the final plat at some point in time, whenever we get there, if we get there. But there is still another meeting between the township and the developer for the final plat stage, and I'm going to direct my client to make sure that all the covenants are required by the township to be covered at that meeting, so the final plat is actually signed by the township. So the township has to physically sign the milars for the final plat, and I believe the covenants should be able to be caught or dealt with at the township level at that time.
Right, well, and if, and that's a question for staff, do we even have to comment on, on any covenant in the conditions if that's part of the township requirements anyway, right?
True.
So we can leave that, okay. I would just as soon leave that local.
And Mr. Chair, I would also like to have the discussion about the drainage and utility easements, if you're willing to hear from the dorky surveyor on that comment also.
Yeah, and I'm not clarify what we're talking about there.
So the Sterns Electric came back and requested that we put drainage and utility easements on all the side lot lines and along the roads. I do not disagree with the roads, it happens on every plat we do. Jen and Angie can account to that. The utilities running along the public thoroughfares or the public streets, accessing each one of these sheds would, in my opinion, come directly from the roads adjacent to it, I don't know why they wouldn't, but I guess that's my comment. To add extra drainage and utility easements along the side lot lines in a township setting, I would suggest that we not add them. The reason being is drainage and utility easements as recorded in a 505 statute plat get a little bit cumbersome at a township level to ever vacate or deal with from a public entity standpoint to remove or move. In most cases, those sideline drainage and utility easements are, in my opinion, set for more of a residential setting plat, where you have lot, lot, lots stacked back-to-back, you have multiple roads, you have multiple lots. The reason for those side yards are the utility companies would run the utilities along the side yards to adjacent lots and everything such. In this case, it would be my opinion that we would remove that requirement for sidelines just for future legality standpoint for the, the way we have to move them in a township setting, different than a county or a, a city setting, just because I don't, I don't think the need would be there for this subdivision. We would propose we would place them along the lot lines on the roads, as requested by the county typically. Just would like to not have them placed on the side lot lines, please.
That makes sense with this plat, where is that in the, and I'm just looking for it in the conditions.
Mr. Chair, good question, it's not in the conditions, it was part of the
It was part of the plat.
Sterns Electric comments, and in the staff report, we didn't add it as conditions, but definitely we would like you guys to discuss it and make a decision.
Okay, thank you. Glad I wasn't not being able to read something, I looked at it like three times, so. All right. All right, we covered a lot thus far, any other questions for staff or the applicant at the moment? Dave, fire away.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, I, I understand this has been covered with the prior planning commission. This project doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I, I don't understand it, in the sense that I understand there's a high demand for storage, I get that. But to have individual sheds on such large parcels, I, I, the ordinance, I'm not, and I, maybe Jason's question's kind of clarified some of this. I'm not sure how our ordinance defines residence. And I'm concerned that the restrictions are not restrictive enough. What would prevent these sheds, storage sheds, to become some kind of seasonal summer shouse, you know?
That's fine.
And because again, I, to have these lar, you know, storage sheds spread out over large parcels, I envision the next step down the road is gonna be a application for, to replat or make these residential housing lots, and I, and maybe that's fine, but I, just not clear as to the history of this project and, and why sheds dispersed over such a large area.
I can try to start with that one, I'm not the developer, obviously, but I can give you my insight on what the developers told me. Why I'm sitting here in front of you and why this is an atypical subdivision, I don't disagree with that, I, I recognize that. This is still allowed within the ordinance, I would say. The reason I'm here is because there is a demand, there is a demand for that. The Area Lake Association and different people have come to the developer and asked for this. I have a feeling, and again, I can't for surely comment on it 100%, but I have a feeling the sale of these will happen very quickly, and as far as that sale goes, I think the taxes and everything associated with it will reflect that on what they will get for a cost. Can't really do anything past that. I think the staff has did an excellent job, the township themselves, it did an excellent job to limit the use of this down in, in the future. I can't look in the crystal ball and tell you what's gonna come down the road, but I think there's several hurdles set up in subdivision and different requirements and restrictions on this to not allow these to be converted into residential units. You know, the plumbing we just talked about, I don't think these would become a shouse if you can't use a restroom, you can't use any internal water. So yes, they're looking at finding lake lot owners that want to store their, you know, toys, I guess you could say, near them. That's why we're here, I guess. And I think the restrictions against them becoming residential units are pretty, you know, detailed, and I don't see that happening in my lifetime. That's just my comment, because I don't believe the township would ever rezone to get that to happen. Can we look into a crystal ball and say it'll never happen? I, I won't say that, but I think the restrictions here in front of us imposed on this subdivision will limit that from happening.
Do you know is the intent for the owners of these sheds to rent storage space, is that?
My understanding.
Or would it just be personal use?
My understanding, it would be a personal use, somebody that has a lake lot that doesn't have room to put something because of impervious surface, lot size, that kind of requirements, is to purchase one of these and then keep their toys in a shed, yes.
Dave, high likelihood, all these lake lots along the east side of Big Fish, I would guess they would likely be the owners of these lots.
Mr. Chair? Oh. Go ahead.
Angie or Jennifer, do we have another example of this subdivision of sheds that, that, that we can use for an example that has been successful, that do we have an example? Do we have an example of this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Piersky, not that I can think of. I think there was one maybe along the Leesock or I think it was maybe in Leesock Township, and we weren't involved in it because we aren't in Leesock, but we have a little bit of knowledge with the septic. What I would say, and not to repeat myself from the last meeting, but as member Ventura asked, is this feels weird. It's kind of, yeah. What I would say is that back in, Jennifer and I recall 20 some years ago, when we were sitting downtown at the administration center helping develop the first county ordinance, the question was, do we want to allow people sheds on their lots before a home is built? Or do we just want to allow people to have sheds on their lots, period, without a primary structure? And that was highly debated for a while, and the decision was, yes, we do. So for 24 years, that's what we've been allowing. Now, to your point, Commissioner Piersky, have we seen this sort of demand or, or type of development yet? No. Are you going to continue to see it? I would suspect because as Dan said, that lake shore lots are filling up and there's no room for people to build things anymore. So I'm not saying all of those things to advocate for the plat. What I'm saying is that if you don't like what you see here, you have to act on this application with the rules in effect at the time. If you don't like what you see, that's a whole different discussion for a different day and a different, whole different thing.
Which really goes down my comments from the previous meeting because it is, it is that area right now that, that wasn't covered by the ordinance. I mean, there's, there's building restrictions or, you know, I forget the term. You're entitled, so many building entitlements per parcel and property, and that was done for a reason. There's all these things, but this is a different use.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and to Commissioner Ventura's point, is he's a little bit confused, but, but in, in looking in the crystal, we, we don't know how they're going to actually spin and use this. But to look in the crystal where we're, what, where we're going with this, we're talking about sheds and we're talking about sheds on ag property, and that's the kind of conversation that we're starting. But, but now it's involving into something different. Because what's the agricultural use for these sheds on this ag property? It's not. It's recreational, okay? So now, so now let's take all the lakes across the county that have cabins on them, okay? Houses on them. They've got another side of the road that has, does not have cabins. So now the developer just says, okay, I've got this ag property. I'm going to put it into two acre parcels, and I'm going to square it off and I'm going to put these sheds on there, okay? Now, now we have a whole new animal that, that we're going to be now encroaching around all the lakes. This is the direction I see that we're heading because we're creating a new animal.
Yeah. So Joe, to that point, that'd be a good thing to bring up with the county commissioners if there's, should be an ordinance change.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. I'd like a comment on that too, but when we look at that, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Piersky. There's a different animal in front of us today. We have what you would call typical storage unit, row type storage units. We all know what those are. And then we have regular residential, residential storage units where you have a detached shed on your own property or, you know, kind of thing. But I, I would think we would all agree, there is numerous, and I would even say thousands of examples where around our lakes, owners have lake lots, and then across the lake they have a non riparian house or shed. So in theory, this is no different than that, except it's, yeah, it's, it's just, it's a different animal. I don't disagree with you. But if you look at these zoning ordinance and you try to make a change, I just would say, look at it openly, did not limit the people. And again, I'm saying it because there's numerous out there that have a house and across the road they have their shed, they keep their toys. I'm not sure how to handle that or write it in black and white, but yes, this is a different animal. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I can handle that. Because typically then, the way that has happened is because oftentimes the piece, the parcel is actually included across the road. What we're doing here is we're creating new parcels, and then we would perhaps add them to the, back to the initial structure, or they could be unrelated. In other words, my parcel might be three or four blocks down the road because I was able to get that parcel. I, I, I guess we can continue to move on, but what, what we're doing here is we're doing some new things here. And, and again, we were led to a discussion, I remember one time, about an apple orchard. And that apple orchard that we approved turned out to be an event center because we didn't do it the right way.
I appreciate it, Joe. One thing to, I think, address some of these concerns, and this is a question for staff. Could, is it possible to add a condition, let's call it number seven, that overnight occupancy of lots one, two, four, five, and six is prohibited?
We certainly could. Yeah, that could be added to the subdivision agreement. And I also was going to say, Mr. Chair, to answer Member Ventura's question earlier, what is a dwelling unit? We do have a definition in our ordinance, so I'll just read it quick. It's a residential accommodation which includes sleeping, kitchen, or bathroom facilities, which is arranged, designed, used, or intended for use as living quarters at any time. So if we do get complaints from people that say, you know, so and so is living in their shed, or every weekend they have people staying in there, we can defer to that definition. But also, we can add what you suggested, Jason, to make it even more clear.
Just for clarification, I think it said a residence, not dwelling, as far as the conditions are concerned. And I don't know.
Good point.
Maybe it's apples and orange, I don't know if synonymous terms or not, but are we defining residence differently than dwelling?
I'll have to look through the whole agreement. Letter five B says lots one, two, four, five, and six shall not contain a residential dwelling unit. Spell it out there. I'll make sure we're consistent, though.
That's a good clarification. My thought being an overnight occupancy, if everyone knows, okay, adding this as a condition, that prevents someone from pulling a big RV in there, which doesn't need water or a lot of these other things and, and staying. So that might be a way to make sure they truly are sheds.
Think, think of pull the RV in but not stay in it.
That's right.
I know. That'd be great, that'd be a great one to regulate, huh?
Those are pretty easy to tell.
Yeah. Well, and, and, yeah, the regulatory side of that, I realize people are probably cursing.
He deals with that all, that one all the time.
Okay. Well, and there's still, I'm sure, plenty to go on this. Any other questions before we move on to the public hearing? Get ready to go. All right. Anyone here from the public on this one?
Mr. Chair, can I just add, I have a couple letter emails when.
Okay. Very good.
Come on up. You're first.
Boy, if you, both can just state your name and address for the record again, too.
Dale and Mary Schrummel. We're, live west of the property on 27203 Hidden Cove Road. And we have concerns here, so Mary's going to talk about that.
Our property is downstream from this proposed plat. We are the property that's going to be directly impacted by flooding from this proposed platted area, and our beach will be inundated with phosphorus runoff. This is a 40. It was, when it was previously split, it was based on no further plating and an additional buffer be placed around the existing wetland. That never happened. No one came in and regulated. There was no one we could call. You start the slippery slope and then they go from there, and that's what we're facing. The buffer was never added, and now we're discussing plating again. If indeed it is agriculture, why septic well and be able to live in it? Also, why is the proposed building lot on lot three drawn four times the size of the others? That goes in the face of 7,000 square feet of impervious per lot. You've just increased it four times with lot three. And yes, Tara, I appreciate your comment about impervious. Whether it's plowed or grass now, every square inch will absorb. You are now going to increase impervious. Common knowledge tells you you are increasing the runoff, and our property's going to get hit by it. A common knowledge. The engineer's plan states there are conflicting thoughts between the township and the county about a stormwater requirement. So let's look at your ordinance. The engineer stated that if a water plan is required, section seven, part 26, where there is discharge to an existing roadway ditch or proposed activity will degrade or negatively impact, then you need this plan, and you're not putting one in. He failed to include that it goes from the standpipe down what the township calls a road. No road specifications are met on it, but clearly, I, we all, you all got the video. This discharges right through that standpipe that doesn't hold anything back and goes right down what the township calls their road and right into the lake.
A grass road. So a road is a grass nowadays?
With plants.
Makes no sense to me.
No. So here we go. So then it also says that if it negatively impacts, you need a stormwater plan. The drainage goes through this standpipe, discharges to a lake. The lake association took water samples. There is no decrease in phosphorus from the standpipe to the lake. The watershed wrote, this is shock, this is phosphorus shock loading to the Big Fish Lake. That's our beach. That's our lake. It is, it is definitely needs a stormwater. You have the videos. They show the water is not filtered. They show everything that we have talked about here. We even have an engineer or corps of engineers note, was sent to you that the standpipe has not had a positive effect. That's what the engineer is using to say it's going through a standpipe. But here you have all the evidence that it's not filtering. Then furthermore, there is also laws that are specific for that stormwater management. There are Minnesota statutes, 103E and state. You have to show that the outlet improvement will protect the adjoining property from overflow. Also, any improvement may only extend a drainage system downstream to a more adequate outlet. This is a shoreline wetland, and in your county ordinance, it says this is the highest area for protection. This shoreline wetland, and now you're going to increase the impervious by an acre of impervious, and that's an acre of rain. Every time it rains, that's going to come flying down there, every time. And that is not holding it to its highest protection. Greg Berg stated that this plat area is highly sensitive to groundwater contamination. The groundwater is very high there. We're at a lake. This is the shore of a lake. It included Minnesota statutes 103E. It states that infiltration area shall be at least three feet above the seasonal high water ground elevation and our bedrock. That means the excavation in this field would result in groundwater being exposed, and as Greg noted, this could be directly to the aquifer. Sorry. Thanks, Angie. Okay. Nervous. The aquifer is both Big Fish Lake and our wells. All the people along that road, these are our wells. This is our well water. This is Big Fish Lake. That is the aquifer, and it is being impacted. This plat is going to increase impervious service generated where none existed in the past. Common sense tells us that it will generate greater runoff. It will concentrate and increase the rate of runoff. Dale Holmuth of the DNR stated it's 19.8 acres that drain through this field that they want to plat. There is a drop of elevation of over 16 feet from County Road 50 to that standpipe, 16 feet, and that distance. That water runs like a river when it comes through there. It's in the area photographs dating back in history. This will, this runoff generated by any rainfall and spring thaw will be forced into a smaller corridor, which results in greater volume, greater velocity, greater erosion. This is not compatible with anything existing in the neighborhood at all. This does not match township, what is in that area. The covenants have increased since the meeting in November. You've alluded to them that maybe when they go back to the township, maybe we can correct them. But that's a slippery slope. Maybe what? There is nothing. Right now, it says you can live in it for up to a year. That's what they're proposing. Let's put everything out in the, out on the table here. They're proposing you live in it for a year. That's a dwelling. So the county has written they do not enforce these covenants. Clearly, no one does. Please, adding conditions does nothing. Due to the impact, this will be to Big Fish Lake and the adjoining property owners. Coupled with a total lack of transparency and covenants, we do request you deny this plat. This is a slippery slope. No one is regulating. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks. All right. Is anyone else here from the public on this one? Just likewise, if you can state your name and address.
Yes, my name's Alan Schmitz, 27846 Sundance Lane, Cold Spring, Minnesota. And I'm a member of the Collegeville Planning Board, and I thought, I had some time tonight, I thought I'd stop by. We did have concerns in the area, and it is a permitted use in the ordinance, and it was, and so very upfront, we did work with creating some sort of stormwater plan, and then the proposer countered with the stormwater study. And part of the stormwater study in the model is they showed good, healthy grass, and that's not the case out there. The site, the site was farmed with corn, and then it was just left lay, and it's mostly weeds out there and very little grass. And, and one of the conditions that we had in the township is that they provide permanent vegetation out there. And so I noticed tonight, I didn't think I would have to speak, but I'm hearing that it's kind of being overlooked that they don't need to provide permanent vegetation. A lot of the developers out, out there that I see that they just, if they have larger parcels of land, they just leave it laying, it just fills in on its own. And I feel this area is sensitive enough that it should require permanent seeding as one of the conditions. All right. That's all I have to say on that.
Very good. Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Is anyone else here from the public? Jennifer, I know you had a couple of other comments you were going to read in to the.
Here we go. So we had one email from Dave Carlson, and he stated he, let's see. He had heard that there were now maybe allowances for a well, a septic, and even live-in possibilities in each of the new sheds. So he was asking about that and stating concerns about the alley that functions as a wetland drainage in the warm weather months. He also had concerns about prospective purchasers of these lots thinking that that alleyway was a lake access and using it. And the concern was there's no way to check boats for invasive plants. It's too narrow for vehicles, and there's no parking available right along Hidden Cove Road. He states they've been discouraging ATV use in the, during the, these months to allow vegetation to flourish and help filter the wetland runoff and avoid erosion into Big Fish Lake. Heidi did respond to him and let him know that the proposal would not allow a home, it would not allow a septic system on the property, and they're not going to be allowed to use them as living quarters at all. That was Dave Carlson's concerns. And then I had an email from Christie Held. My husband and I live on Hidden Cove Road in, Road in Cold Spring, and we approve of the potential Hidden Cove Shed project. And that's all I have.
All right, very good. Dan, anything you'd want to respond to any of the public comments or? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Sorry, I was just going to also mention that we had gotten comments last month, which were entered into the record. So I'm not going to reread those, but we had comments from Dave Carlson again, Roger and Carol Klopke, and Chris Hyman. So those were the comments from last month.
Very good. Thank you.
Jennifer, if you could, though, we had those comments. Can you just say were they supportive or disapproval?
Yes. So Roger and Carol Klopke on Hidden Cove Road are new to the area, and they understand the stormwater is being addressed. That was their concern. Dave Carlson is pleased that there won't be any homes on the property. He's concerned with wetland and disappointed that there's only a 25-foot setback. And then Chris Hyman was supportive because she was interested in purchasing a lot. And then the Schrummels were also there last month to speak.
Very good. Okay. Anything you want to respond to on, on anything from the public?
Mr. Crowe, I guess I don't want to discuss the alley. I mean, that's a, that's not part of the plat. It's outside the boundary. I don't think I want to really discuss that one. The sand pipe and the stormwater plan we supplied, that was our evidence. We're going to go with a licensed engineer. That's what we're going to stand by. And there is an easement right now, and I believe it's in the name of Sterns County for the area around the sand pipe. So if there was an issue, the county does have something recorded right now where they have access to it.
Okay. All right. All right, very good. Not hearing or seeing anyone else here from the public on this one. A motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Sean.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor of closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those appo, all those opposed. Public hearing closed. Um, so any other discussion on this one before we go to the finding of fact?
Yeah. I got one.
Go ahead, Rich.
Um, when we met back in, uh, November, I had asked for a response from the DNR. At least give the DNR a chance to respond. And there was a response on, uh, November 17th. There was an email sent out by an individual from the DNR, and they go through and they list the concerns in regards to storm runoff and direct flow to the, uh, Big Fish Lake. And, um, they'd bring out that there was a standpipe in all that wetland and so forth and so on. And I see that this was, um, it was sent to, uh, Ms. Benson, Department Chair for Environmental Services. And, um, I would like this to be in the public record. It's not in our packet of information. And, uh, uh, being that I had requested it, and I thought the DNR did respond, that, um, we should make a point of yes, they did respond to us. We, uh, as far as the information that is given here, um, I don't know what we can, we can do with it in regards to, um, the concern for runoff and what's going on with the wetlands in regards to vegetation, whatever else needed to be done there. But, uh, this should go into the public record.
Yeah. Thanks, Rich. And, and just to expand on it, I think, if I remember, there was two letters that were submitted, or two, uh, notifications from the DNR. One, that was stating a concern that was earlier, and then, or is there three of them?
There's, there, there was this one.
Yep.
There was one submitted in February.
Yeah.
Or two in February. One was submitted by the same individual that did this one. And then a supervisor from the DNR rescinded, censored the letter that was sent.
Yep. Retracting.
Yeah. Retracting everything that person had, uh, submitted. But anyways, I did want to just make the point that I had asked to get some kind of response from the DNR. And so, that one is still viable. That was not rescinded or censored.
Good. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on, on this one?
I have a question related to comments. Um, is there a 103E public drainage system involved with this?
Um, Mr. Chair, Tara, you'd have to tell me what that means.
Uh, the public had, had cited 103E as a statute, and I'm just wondering if there actually a public drainage system that runs somewhere.
I can't answer that, uh, right now. I, I don't believe so.
So either, but I, I wouldn't stick my neck out and answer it 100%. No, I don't believe so.
I, I do believe, and I'd have to do my homework on this, that the state shoreline rules are based on 103.
103E, I believe is what she said.
E? Yeah. Again, I, I, I'm going to stop there because I'm guessing at this point, which isn't helpful for anybody.
All right. Any other discussion items? I'll state, um, just going back to November, and spent a lot of time on this one. It's a tricky one for a variety of reasons. There's environmental concerns. Um, there's, by, by some, there's, uh, just where, how does this fit within the, the comprehensive plan and, and current ordinances? And I've gone back and forth on it. Uh, I guess the evolution of thought that I had, looked at the water side of it, and there's always water concerns by lakes. Um, I came to the conclusion, just, I, I don't know that replating this is going to significantly change the, the water flow to the lake. That's my opinion. There might be others out there, but I didn't, I don't see that being a, a substantial difference. Um, and then it comes to the, the loophole, if you will, within the ordinance. There's building entitlements that are given to prevent, um, overbuilding of agricultural property with residences, and this kind of falls outside of that to a degree. Or it comes, at the end of the day, it's a current law. Um, the applicant followed the law at the time. They didn't, they're not trying to skirt around the law. They platted this within the current law. So, it's really hard to, to go against someone that stayed within the law, uh, in, in trying to follow the guidelines that were in place by our county. So, back to your point, Joe, I think it's a fair thing to, to look at and maybe talk about and figure out where, you know, how to handle it in the future. I, I think there's probably some demand in ways that this can be done, uh, in, in a positive way. And there's other places it's going to be inappropriate, and that's something that we maybe want to look at with the ordinances. But currently, the applicant followed the ordinance, ordinances that we have in place. So, that kind of was my evolution of thought on this particular topic, but that's the opinion of one. So, any other discussion that anyone else has on this before we go to finding of facts?
I, I just would respond, Jason, is that, um, yeah, you, you can say that they work within the, um, the ordinance or the, the policy that we have in place, and that is in reference to agricultural sheds. But these, to me, are not agricultural sheds. And I think we are missing the point of, uh, of, of what the intention was when we talked about having agric, or sheds on agricultural. Uh, and, and what we've done is we created a subdivision, which again, in my fear is that we're going to create a, a whole new animal. Uh, and, uh, once the genie is out of the bottle, it's very difficult, I believe, to put the genie back into the bottle. Uh, you, you know, with, maybe this is something that maybe would, uh, require some research and study, you know, more, just like we did with solar gardens, just like we did with the, uh, Airbnb. Uh, but, uh, you, you folks as a, as a committee, you guys can decide what you're going to do. But ultimately, it will come to the, uh, the commissioners. So, that, you know, it, it is up to you. But, uh, I, I think we're, we're, we're playing with the rules, again, very similar to what we did when we had, uh, an, an apple orchard turned into a, uh, entertainment venue.
Mr. Chair, um, disagreeing with the commissioner is always interesting, but I just want to, I just want to be clear to the planning commission that residential accessory structures are allowed on residential properties or ag properties. So, it isn't, we're, there's no idea that these are going to be ag. So, it, and, and again, I'll say it again, and you can go through your findings, but typically, you would base your findings on the rules at the time, the proposals in front of you. Land use ordinances change, as you know, three, sometimes three to five times a year. Um, we were very reactionary. That's what government is and does, because we don't know what's going to be the next new thing. So, if you don't like what you see, I, my recommendation as a zoning administrator would be, you act on the rules that are in effect right now. And if you don't like what you see, then you go through your proper channels to look at changing it in the future.
And, and, Mr. Chair, if I may respond. Angie, I agree with you. Yes, you can put, uh, sheds on parcels, but what we're doing here is we're actually creating parcels for the sheds. So, you had a, you had a parcel here, and then they would be, be more than, uh, willing to be able to have a parcel on there. Anybody that has a parcel, if it's large enough, they should be able to put, put it on here. What, what, what we're doing here is we're creating parcels in order to put sheds up. And that's different than the ordinance that we have.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on that one. I mean, that is the chicken and the egg. I wouldn't disagree with you, Mr. Persky. Um, but there are farm operations that put grain bins and sheds on parcels that are created that aren't homesteaded farm parcels. So, I, again, just to clarify, I, I say, I don't disagree with you. You have something in front of you that you have not seen before. I'm not going to stand here and say that's not the case. Um, but the genie in the bottle and the, you know, chicken or the egg, or whatever you want to look, I'd agree with Ms. Berg that this is something, if, if it's wants to be addressed differently in the future, I think you have to change your ordinance to address it. The, the application in front of you meets the ordinance.
All right. Well, then, let's move into the findings of fact. This will be fun tonight. Uh, number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not? I will state, since I previously just said it, or stated it, um, I believe it is consistent with the zoning ordinance, uh, number 439, uh, sections 9.3 and 10.2, um, subdivision ordinance, number 230, sections 5 and 8. So, it is consistent with the current ordinances. Does anyone see it differently?
I see it differently.
Okay. Fire away, Mike. What do you got?
I, it, it would, it would, it would fit if it was, uh, already zoned, but it's not. Right now, it's ag land. So, I think it doesn't fit.
Okay. Very good. Um, any other on that one? Any others on that one? Number two, does a proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm not sure. I don't believe that it does. Um, simply because there really does not seem to be a clear precedent for this type of project. And as a result, um, I understand we're, we're going to recommend something to the county board for final decision, but I don't, and I'm new enough that I'm not sure if our role is to establish some precedent for projects like this. Um, and, and because it really is not clear to me that we've ever allowed anything like this before, how could it be part of the, uh, comp plan?
All right. Very good. Any other thoughts on that one?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would have to point out that, uh, it is in conflict with our living goals and our agricultural residential use policies. Uh, the residential uses in the agricultural areas must embrace the comprehensive plan's future land use factors to minimize conflicts, um, between adjacent land uses and natural resources. And I think, um, this, this kind of creates conflict.
Okay. Very good. Any other thoughts on that? All right. Thank you. Uh, number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would just point out, same answer, basically. There's, there are no other shed lots in the area.
All right. Very good. Uh, number four, has, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? I would say on this one, there is, uh, there's a lot of, um, subdivision agreements that have been listed to, um, that have been worked through to ensure that it does fit within, um, the, the ordinance and the spirit of the ordinance. So, in that case, I think it's been demonstrated. Any other thoughts on that?
Mr. Chair, I believe it's been demonstrated that it's trying to meet the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thanks, Tara. Any others? All right. And then, number five, any other issues pertinent to this matter? I would say it's pertinent, we have township input. Um, we've had DNR input and feedback. We've had public, uh, input and feedback, um, addressing things like environmental concerns. Um, uh, there's, uh, Stearns Electics, so public service and facilities, uh, comments on this, and feedback from the applicant. Any others? All right. Then, um, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, well, maybe this will be part of the motion. I just want to mention to make sure, if there's a motion to approve that we are solid on the condition.
Conditions. Yep. Yep. Very good. Thank you. We have a motion. I will start this, not hearing anyone. I will make a motion that we rec-amend approval with seven conditions. And so, modifying condition 5B, um, on lots 1, 2, 4, and 6 shall not contain residential dwelling unit, and then leave that, because then even in the event that some, let's say 20 years from now, this property gets rezoned, it would still prevent then houses from going in on that property. So, that's what that condition's getting at. Or, we kind of flew through that earlier. Um, I would add, uh, or make an amendment to B, so septic systems, um, that interior plumbing and septic systems are prohibited on lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, meaning the one house that's currently there keeps the interior plumbing and septic. The rest of them are, obviously don't have any septic and water on the interior. Um, and then number seven, uh, would be the additional one, overnight occupancy of lots 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 is prohibited. So, every other lot outside of the one that currently has the house, there would not be any overnight, um, occupancy allowed. But that's my recommendation. I don't know if it'll have a second. And hearing done, is there then a motion to recommend denial?
I'll make that motion. Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. So, motion made by Sean to recommend denial, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, two ayes. So, the, yeah, well, roll call. We have, uh, Mike, Sean, Dave, and Rich as, uh, recommend ayes on the denial, and Tara and myself as nays on the, um, denial. So, then, recommendation for denial will go to the county board, or county commissioners' meeting on the 4th.
Uh, Ms. Berg, can I ask, uh, what ordinance we're getting recommended on denial, which ones we're not meeting? Can I ask the board that?
Mr. Chair, uh, Dan, not at this time. Um, and as for when this will go on to the next county board meeting, typically it's, typically these are approved, so they go on when the final plat's ready.
Oh, got it.
Um, so we'll work with the developer on when they want that to be on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So, stay tuned. Yep.
All right. Very good. Um, all right. Then that takes us to agenda item number six, which is the meeting, or, uh, meeting minutes from January. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review those.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Sean to approve the January minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tara seconds. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, all right. Meeting minutes approved. Any other discussion items for tonight?
Uh, quickly, Mr. Chair, how we set then for, uh, scheduling for next month, because we missed a, 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 would you say, Angie, are we going to be a, a double schedule next month because we're behind, or what would you say?
Commissioner Persky, this would have been your double scheduled month?
And we didn't have any others really coming in?
None. Um, I'll let Jennifer speak to what, what's coming.
Yeah, we had nothing else come in for March, which was unusual. Um, so...
But you can't see the ground, that's why.
That could be part of it. Yeah. Coming up though, for, uh, April, we will have definitely a few items. So, let me just look here real quick. Um, I believe we've got, here we go.
I'm not a fan of the 6 o'clock start.
Yeah. We'll have a couple of rezonings again on next month.
Okay.
And potentially a CUP for, uh, digester, if they get that in. And, yeah, so we will see.
And, and then, so is it my understanding that vacation home rentals, we will now not see them at all? They'll just come through the county, and they'll be under that ordinance, correct?
We will, you will still see them if their occupancy is nine or higher.
Oh.
So, there will still be some. A lot of people aren't going to be able to reach their occupancy with the size of their septic, but some, some may.
Did you see in the paper about the redhead creamery?
No.
Uh, they went to the Nationals for their cheese.
Oh, yes, I did see that. Yeah.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Really? Like number two or number five in the, in the country for their cheddar.
I'm sorry. Where are they at?
Uh, Padawal, Bruton.
Oh, Pad, yeah, the Padawal.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
By the pub.
Oh.
Give the planning commission heads up, April will also be reviewing some ordinance changes that we've been working on, um, for accessory structures, not related to the issue that we just had tonight, but happens to be timing, uh, and, and a bunch of other things. So, stay tuned. We'll have a packet I'm working on that will be going out to you for discussion. And for new members, uh, planning commission makes a recommendation, and then the county board holds a public hearing, which I'm anticipating for sometime in May.
All right. Very good. All right, very good. All right, anything else? All those motion to adjourn? Thanks Dave. Thanks for the second, Jason. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.
Good job, man. Good job.